It's not exactly dramatic change.
So you would be looking for a motion for us that sounds like we moved to approve the modifications as presented?
That's what staff is recommending at this time.
Sure, yeah, and John pretty much summed it up there. There's not a whole lot, like you said, a year ago, this received a conditional approval. The first sheet, the only thing that changed there is we did add the date for whenever the waiver was provided for the modification of the 10-foot planting area. Updated the date on a title sheet. The second sheet is the existing conditions. One of the things there that changed was the overhead electric lines that go to the two neighboring buildings have been moved. So the existing features are a little bit different than, just in that one sense. Everything else, the existing features is the same. Like John said, the back of the building changed a little bit on the proposed sheet, and John is right, it's just because of the elevator. The length of the building didn't change any, it was just that the second floor didn't go the whole way to the rear before. Now the second floor goes the whole way to the rear of the building because of the elevator shaft. And then there was an update to the Canterbury fence as well. John, if you want to scroll down in the first phase, that fence along the back, along Schoolhouse Alley, that was originally proposed as a split rail. After talking to some borough officials, they decided to go with the Canterbury fence instead, as a Harb approved fence. So that's the only real change there. And some landscaping, some of the borough officials wanted to have some park benches and some things in the back that would be a little bit more maintenance friendly. They were concerned about the number of small plants that would need to be maintained in the back of that with the first submittal. Anything I want to point out there? If you go over, John, if you want to scroll to your right, there's still the required and provided planning units. You can see we're still providing almost more than double what's required. So there's still plenty of planning units, and just wanted to let you know that there was some updates there to that. And then the last sheet's just some details and shows that detail for this new permeable paving system, this plastic paving system that's going to go in the backyard. It's just, the goal there is to not have grass that Robbie has to go mow, this little tiny patch of grass, right? That was the goal, so.
Thank you, Chad. Is there like a list of all of those, or?
That's it, those things I just gave you. I didn't provide a written list, though.
Okay, so those are about eight or nine, but they're all captured on this plan?
That's correct.
Are there any questions about those that Chad just explained? Or concerns?
I like their improvements. I think you've created a nice little room outside for people to enjoy, and instead of just looking at the landscape, you actually get to sit down in there and be in an outdoor room. So I support the changes. And I don't know if we want to look at the sidewalk detail, but since I know we always talk about sidewalks, the one thing, the only thing I noticed is stone types for the Penn Dot thing is 2A versus Ashtow 57, which we spec. And I think the void space is a little different there, but the one says to be compacted, the other says nothing in regards to that, but.
Yeah, I like, I've always liked 57s better because they come, you don't need to compact them. Whenever you put the 2A in, then you got to compact it. And when you're putting it in along like, well, of course, our building's going to be a new building, but the neighboring buildings are going to be old buildings with old foundations, and you don't want to be running compaction equipment next to old foundations. So that's why we almost always go with the 57s, which is usually, it's a little bit more void space, like Marty said, so that's kind of the difference there. But Penn Dot will defer to us. Penn Dot puts 2A under their sidewalks, but that's usually more whenever you have like an open area, not when it's like a downtown borough setting.
Chad, what's that Canterbury fence? What's it made out of?
It's painted aluminum. It looks like wrought iron. So if you've gone down South Street, since we've redid South Street, the streetscape there, there's a little retaining wall right off of Washington Street, that little retaining wall that was put in, there's that Canterbury. The Canterbury's the style. And actually, is there a detail for that, John?
Yes, I can pull up the intersection.
Oh yeah, there is. If you go to the detail sheet, I believe there's a detail. Yeah, right there in the top right. It has the little spikes, but it has a bar over the top of it, so it doesn't impale somebody that tries to climb over it.
Right. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Okay, then we're looking for a motion that sounds like we move to accept the modifications to the 340 Baltimore Street plan as presented.
I'll move to approve the modifications to the Gettysburg Welcome Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes five to zero. Our last item under new business is discussion regarding public comment sections. And can I say something about that first? At the end of our last meeting, there was some public comment that I thought strayed more into criticism of personnel, and I thank Nick Redman for pointing that out more quickly than I was able to. And I had asked John Whitmore to review the way that the borough handles that and actually signals it right on the agenda that that is not permitted, kind of public comment. I was not thinking that we would go further than that and restrict the people speaking or how long they are speaking, but I think that there is interest in discussing it, and so I believe that's why John put this on the agenda. And then I'll just hand it to you.
Yeah, so in particular, just providing the public with, I would say, ground rules to a certain extent, but making sure that everyone's on the same page with understanding of what the purpose of the meeting is that's occurring in public, the expectation from the borough as it relates to council meetings, and if there's a potential then for the Planning Commission to have a similar policy. Council has a specific resolution, I have it on the screen now. The agenda for a council meeting includes additional pages which detail specific expectations for public comment and how they will be handled. Overall, the borough also defers to Robert's Rules of Order, so it does give the chair quite a bit of discretion then to be able to have a meeting flow as would be appropriate. So we'll always defer to the chair when it comes to public comment or things like that, at least from a staff level. But in terms of providing the pre-meeting information, that's something that staff can do really easily, and if there's interest from the commission, we could have this resolution that's already in existence worked up for the Planning Commission for review either at the August or September meeting.
Thank you, John. I appreciate you putting that on our agenda today. And before I ask for questions or discussion about this, I guess I want to say one thing, and that is several of us have been chair of this commission, Marty and Sarah and I, and we all inherited it from Rad Schultz before that, and I have great respect for Rad Schultz, who was chair for many years. And he used to, Chad, you remember this, like, he would specifically state that Planning Commission was a place where there could be more back and forth with the community. And I think that was partly because people who show up to Planning Commission meetings typically have done their research and sometimes come with very valuable input. And most of the time, I've only benefited from public comment like that. And Rad also just was a good person and seemed to be able to navigate it well. Now, when there are controversial issues, it gets more difficult, and I think it's worth us discussing where we are now. I personally don't see a problem with the way public comment has gone. I don't see people abusing it or going above their time or talking too much about extra things, aside from a few moments. So that's my opinion, and I'm not sure I would support adopting the Borough Council resolution other than those clauses that say, let's keep it to the agenda items, let's keep it within five minutes, and let's make sure that everyone has a chance to speak. But that's just my opinion as one member. What do others think?
I would echo that. I think, you know, my only issue, I've not been on as long as other members, but the only issue that I've seen has been, you know, personal attack of a borough staff member last meeting. So I think before that, totally working fine. I think we could probably be, probably a bit more transparent and enforceable enforcing of the five minutes. I know we've been pretty lenient with that, which I don't think is, I mean, I like the idea of kind of using Robert's Rules of Order to give more leniency and not having, you know, everything so specific, right? Like, if we have not a lot on our agenda, and it's a shorter meeting, and someone wants to speak for seven minutes, I wouldn't want like technically us to be going against a resolution, but with the understanding that if there's a long agenda, if we're short on time, that five minutes is kind of a generally accepted principle. So I'm comfortable kind of leaving it where it is with the understanding that within our current rules, you know, you, Charles as the chair, could, I guess, cut someone off within your rights, within the rules of order, right? So I think that's, to me, appropriate without getting more official back. Because I absolutely agree, I think, I've been on Borough Council meetings, love the Borough Council, but I do kind of appreciate more of a back and forth and open discussion. And I think we really benefited from that as a Planning Commission during the rezoning particularly, and I think there was a lot of good comments said, a lot of stuff that we didn't think of, that we then tried to incorporate, and so I would definitely not want to get rid of all of that. But, you know, I think us having the ability to keep things in order is appropriate.
I would just add, I suspect part of the reason that you developed what I'll call a more informal approach to your meetings where there is kind of a public exchange throughout is because you inevitably will have that when you're reviewing plans. And you have design professionals and engineers and, you know, in some cases attorneys out there effectively presenting plans and, in some cases, navigating waiver requests in real time. And I suspect from that developed what is a more free-flowing meeting format where perhaps other members of the public have the opportunity, or at least are not rejected if they try to chime in on their thoughts on any particular action item during that item's consideration under your agenda. Whether you want to continue that is up to you, subject to, you know, whatever other considerations you might have.
I think that's a really great point, and it seemed to work well during the rezoning to a degree, but I do see it could be complicated by a big, complicated development plan if everyone is speaking without restraint. So I guess I'll echo like John and Nick, that I would support the five minutes and the five minutes before the meeting and the five minutes after the meeting, but now that we're out of rezoning and into land development, restricting those comments to the people who are presenting the plan and not the wider public during those items on the agenda.
One thing you may wish to consider, and obviously this is your collective decision, if you have something that is highly controversial and you have dozens and dozens of people lined up who wish to speak, are you inclined to give them all five minutes should they wish to have five minutes at the start of your meeting? And the answer to that can certainly be yes. Or would you want to cap that at an hour? You know, half an hour, some period of time, so that you can get to that agenda item and consider it more fully? And perhaps allow for additional back and forth during your discussion of that. Again, that's your decision, I'm just putting that out there.
What do people think about Adam's question?
I'm just telling you what I've seen some places do and some places not do.
I've seen like the, well, I won't name the bodies, but those who restrict it to 30 minutes and five minutes, that means six people, and I've always thought that's too restrictive. And I noticed that's what Borough Council has, but I rarely see Borough Council actually do that. So I've spoken too much, but I guess I want to say, I'm not sure I want to enshrine a policy at this moment, but what do others think?
I would be interested in seeing and considering and discussing a policy. I would err on the side of having a written policy that we can refer back to, you know, with the understanding that you as chair can make exceptions to the policy as you see fit, you know? But in instances where things might be more controversial, there might be a lot more heated public comment, it's nice to be able to refer back to a document and say, this is our policy.
Thank you, Jenny. I can see that argument.
So am I understanding this? We don't have an actual written policy yet?
No, we just, this thing that, this resolution that John put is what Borough Council adopted many years ago, but what do we have, John?
Well, you have the state's Sunshine Act laws.
Okay.
So you have to follow certain procedures for advertising, for allowing for individuals to like record meetings, things like that, but that's more at the state level. You don't, we don't have, the Planning Commission doesn't really have bylaws, which that's its own issue, but this would be generally a part of the actual inner workings of the organization for the Planning Commission. How do you, how do you want the board to operate? How do you want like things to occur? We haven't done that with the borough, so this is kind of new in that regard, but it's also not new territory for any other jurisdiction. It's just something, going through the motions, making sure we're, A, providing people with the ability to comment, but then also providing you all with the ability to make decisions about how the board should operate.
So I have two questions, and what would you recommend? And two, does the chair have discretion to follow it or not?
So there's two ways to look at it. I will answer the second part, because, actually, first one. What we're asking at this time is just for direction, to see if you want to continue so we can provide an actual policy or like a resolution like this at a future meeting. So if the board's amenable, I have some justification for the discussion. If there are additional points, we can get those. As it relates to the parliamentary procedure, so the chair runs the meeting. If at any point a member does not feel that the chair or something, like public comments going off the rail or anything like that, you can always raise an objection, a point of order, making that known. The way that the meeting should then be held is that there should be a discussion on that point of order with a vote then on either doing what's been directed, so ending public comment or ending specific public comment. It gets really wonky with what I'm going down. As a board, you all work really well. I don't think that, it hasn't been an issue with having, at least in my experience with this planning commission, there hasn't been like a problematic where, a problem where the chair is acting against the wishes of the board, there's disagreement or dysfunction. And that's not something that's considered professionally from this group. It's just, it would be something that, if it's, if you have a formal policy, you can go back to it. In the event we were to have a public comment section go completely off the rails, which in today's society is not unusual, especially when people are acting towards, for the camera as opposed to for the meeting, we can see a situation where that, having a policy in writing would go a long way.
Chad, can I, go ahead, Jenny.
Oh, I was going to ask a procedural question about comments received over email. I don't have a good understanding of how those enter into our discussion versus comments presented during public comment. You know, we as Planning Commission members don't have borough email addresses. You know, to my knowledge, our personal emails are not published on the borough website, but correct me if I'm wrong.
If they're there, they're probably buried in.
Okay.
Something, but it's not to say that the public doesn't have the ability to get your contact information.
Sure. Right. So I guess my question would be more, what do we do with those public comments that are received over email when somebody may not be able to attend a meeting but wants their voice heard?
When it's a public hearing, those are included in the file associated with that public hearing and generally would be noted on the minutes associated with the public hearing. But it's just general public comment, I mean, I don't have a direction per se. We generally, we share the information with the chair and with Adam, but just if it's something, I mean, I'm trying to think of if we've had any that haven't been sent to everyone, which I don't think that's occurred. But naturally, if the Planning Commission wants to have a policy that informs how those comments would be processed and disseminated, we can include that information, too.
What you shouldn't do when you get those is then reply all and deliberate amongst yourselves outside of a meeting, which can be very difficult to resist doing, depending on the nature of the issue at hand. I think when you receive those sorts of communiques, you can do with them what you want. Speaking for myself, if I received something like that, I would view that as lobbying almost. You know, this is a resident expressing their point of view on something and suggesting what they think the outcome should be, just like they would if they were coming to a public meeting. But it's up to you how much weight you want to give that if you think it deserves less weight because it's not made at 7:00 PM on the third Monday of the month, that's up to you.
Thank you.
Chad, I was going to put you on the spot since you have the longest institutional memory of our body, I think. Sort of? Like, where have you seen it go well, not well? What are your thoughts?
So I think the most important thing is what Adam said a little bit ago. I can't imagine a Planning Commission meeting without having back and forth with the professionals that are representing land development plans. That's just, one of the number one things you guys do here is address plans, especially because you have the approval authority. We're going to have to have interactions back and forth with professionals. I don't know that I've ever seen like where you would identify only the people that can talk during that time. Every Planning Commission meeting, of course, every municipality I represent is in South Central PA and kind of more of a rural, I haven't represented anybody in a city setting where you could have dozens and dozens of people at a Planning Commission meeting that have always been kind of like we handle it, just like you have. Could you have rules of order that kind of limit it just in case you needed them? Sure. But I think most often, I think you hit the nail on the head, most often you need to have that back and forth with the professionals that are here representing a plan so that you can progress the plan. If otherwise, it would just, we would sit there and have to make, take deliberation on a plan without any feedback from the professionals, I just don't see that happening. Now, I have seen, I have sat in meetings where there was very contentious things, like warehouses, and where they would cut it off. What I would see is you would ask for a raise of hands of how many people wanted to speak, and if there was 30 people in a room, you'd go around and count them, and you add 30 times five, and you would cut it off after like an hour or something like that. I've had meetings where they would cut it off at 10:30 at night, and we went through four meetings starting at 7 till 10:30 of just public comments until they got through all the public comments. That was the most extreme condition I've ever seen, where they would just set a timeframe and cut it off, like, at this timeframe, we're going to cut it off, meaning we're going to end the meeting, we're going to stop the meeting, recess, and resume again the following month. So I can see situations where you could potentially have to cut it off at a certain time. I feel like that might be a good tool, should you need it in your toolbox, but you're right. Back to the days of Rad, we really have never had that kind of, I think there was only maybe one or two meetings where we were here until 10 or 11 at night. That hardly ever happens here. So getting into a lot of effort to create something like that for those one or two times in 10 years, questionable whether it's worth that effort.
And if I can, just to build off of that, bear in mind as you ponder this, you have certain timeframes by which you have to make a decision. So if you're facing a plan that your extension's running out, you have to take action on it in some form at that meeting, perhaps, depending on your meeting scheduled, or some other alternative outcome is going to happen. So you can't necessarily be in a position, barring some leniency perhaps by the developer, and I'm not, I'm not speaking of any particular project. If you're not given flexibility, you cannot just stop your meeting and say, well, we want to have more opportunity for public comment at our next month's meeting because you may have to take action at that meeting. Whether you would ever actually experience that, I don't know. It would have to be very long, and you'd have to have, as I said, dozens and dozens of people lined up, all wanting to take their five minutes or 10 minutes or whatever you might allow them, but I do just want to put that out as a possibility.
Yeah, and can I add one more point to that? So you asked the question if we have any type of bylaws or anything, and John's right, we really don't, but what we do have is municipality's planning code. And what Adam just mentioned was kind of a reference to the municipality's planning code says that you have to make a decision within 90 days. So you do have some rules that we have, you know, we have a borough code and we have the municipality's planning code that says that we've got to make these certain decisions. So there are some kind of rules that we have to follow. It's not just do whatever you want to do, but that's one of the most important ones, that MPC says you've got 90 days to make a decision, and that's the developer gives an extension. So I could see a situation where you could say that, hey, we're just going to keep table in this thing for multiple times, and developers say, no, I'm not going to give you any more extensions, I'm forcing your hand, make a decision.
So given that, given that John and staff are recommending something, that Jenny mentioned the benefit of a policy, and Adam also, I'm just throwing one out. What if we kept it, definitely the lines related to no personal attacks, those items that are actually highlighted, I believe, are highlighted in the Borough Council ones, and then something like 60 minutes. The chair is able to cut off after 60 minutes, and the public comment should be between three and five minutes. I'm just thinking out loud here.
Well, you could split the difference and say, public comment, you know, and either one of them should not exceed 60 minutes unless extended by the chair.
Sure.
You could do something like that if you wanted to.
What do you think, John?
We, I think we could definitely provide you with a draft that would have this information, and if any additional points would be needed, then we could go from there, but staff has, I have plenty to work with if this is something that you all want to proceed with.
And certainly that tip about show of hands could be used, and actually having somebody keeping time if it comes to that, not in a meeting like this, but in a meeting where it might be a filled room. But what do other Planning Commission members think? Should staff work on this?
Well, I think we need to maybe come to a consensus on a timeframe. I think 60, an hour sounds good. Five people into 60 minutes is 30 people. I don't even think we have 30 chairs out there, so.
That sounds good to me. I think the only things I would add is if we're going to be including something on every agenda, I think that's what we'd probably do if we had this, I think it'd be nice to put kind of the structure of those comments to let people know that, you know, initial comments related to agenda items, that it's five minutes, that you need to state your name and your address, that the end comments are related to anything. And then I do think it'd be nice if we put something about that back and forth during comment, during agenda items, because I think, you know, if you're not familiar with these meetings, you might not know that like, how do we want, how do we want people to comment in the middle of an agenda item, right? Because I think it is challenging that if, you know, if you don't know to say something at the beginning, we start an agenda item, and, you know, most of ours are about people's neighborhoods, and something comes up, and you might want to put a comment out there. I like allowing for that, but making sure that the people here know how they would go about, you know, oh, I heard something I dislike or don't like, or I agree with or something, how would I make it known that I'd like to speak in the middle? Do we want rules for that? Because I just, you know, it's tough, because then once the agenda item's over, typically we make a motion at that time. So then if you're waiting till the end of the meeting to make a public comment, it's like, well, you didn't know what we were going to talk about, you didn't have a chance to say anything during, and then it's done. So, I mean, I've found that personally frustrating with Borough Council meetings sometimes, where you don't really know what's going to be talked about, and then you can't talk in the middle of it. And, yeah, so I feel like I'm rambling, but just something to allow the public who's here so that they understand, here's how I can make a public comment based off of these rules that we've provided.
Can you work with that? Okay, with other comments to provide input to John? Other comments to provide input to John? Okay, I don't think we need a motion. I think this is just directing you to.
Yeah, I'll proceed with this.
All right, well, thanks for entertaining that, everyone. So we have a few announcements. The first is that our next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 18th at 7:00 PM. And then two important Borough Council meetings, which Planning Commission members might want to put on your calendars, and definitely the second one. The first one, though, is on Monday, July 28th at 7:00 PM, and that's where the zoning ordinance will be discussed with our old friend, the consultant Troy Truax, will be here to talk to Borough Council, and we can be in the audience. Then the Borough Council will be meeting on August 25th, and they will be discussing the zoning ordinance, and Planning Commission members have been, I believe, specifically asked to attend, John, to discuss the draft ordinance and update process. I know this is just an announcement, John, but could you say anything more about that?
Well, hopefully we would be having two meetings in August with the Borough Council. We haven't had that exactly nailed down, but the idea is to have just the opportunity for a discussion with members of both groups, just to explain the rationale of thinking for some things. Because we all identify, are aware of, I guess, the changes that have occurred in the drafting process and, I don't want to speak for council, but I think there are not necessarily even nagging questions, but just, just general questions that they want to be able to ensure that they're going to be making the review that's accurate, but if there's any modifications, then having a discussion with Planning Commission on best practices and how to move forward.
So would that be a format like we're all at the same table or?
I'm not quite sure yet. I think it's probably going to be something more along the lines of just council in the dais and then having Planning Commissioners.
Like a Senate hearing.
Wow.
Or not.
There's nothing like a Senate hearing.
Yeah.
Don't go there.
But we would be, it would be, actually, I'd have to speak with Charles on that. We do have the ability to do a set, a layout where we have like a big table here, so we might actually be inclined to do that. But we have, we have a few other items that are ongoing and we are getting close to budget season. So there is a real interest from the council in having this process, that their real fund begins with their public hearing, their advertising requirements. So they, they would like to see this ordinance passed by the end of the year and, yeah, making sure that the draft ordinance is something that they're okay with, or at least if they're having their questions answered, they can proceed. If we can have that completed by the end of August, we'll be on track.
Thank you. We have now come to the second public com, no, I'm sorry. Before that, additional comments from Planning Commission members. Is there anything anyone wishes to say?
Yeah, I guess just to that last point for Borough Council members, and I don't know how, I don't want to be rude, but I would say that, you know, this was a very open process that Borough Council could have had a representative at and sometimes did. And so I'm happy to talk about decisions we made, but it would be helpful if Borough Council knows that there's recordings, there's minutes, that if there's any question about, you know, why we did something. I think we were always pretty clear when we made decisions what the rationale was, whether that was from public comment, whether that was whatever. So I don't, again, happy to, happy to meet, happy to talk about stuff, but I, in my mind, saw this as an iterative process that the Borough Council was following. And so I wouldn't want to have to rehash kind of every issue that we talked about because the question is like, well, why did you come to this decision? It's like, well, publicly we came to the decision. So again, just my additional comment, hopefully they take that with a good intention that it is. I just, if we want to keep this moving, I think that's an appropriate action to take. Everything's written down, everything's filmed, so.
Thank you, Nick. I agree. Other comments?
Yeah, could I add one thing about, and I was taking notes there, so I'm not sure. We jumped past the Gettysburg Station into the Gettysburg Welcome Center project, and I'm not sure if there was any vote taken. I don't know if we needed one, but should there have been a vote to table the plan? And also, I wanted to make sure that we're not up against our 90 days that we just talked about.
I think we were out fairly far on that.
We, this in regards to Gettysburg Station?
Yeah, station.
That project, so that one is, we have an order for September?
So we didn't need, we didn't need to take a vote to table today? We're okay?
That'll have to happen in September if we're not, if the board isn't ready to proceed.
I would suggest checking your minutes for that.
Yes.
Just to be careful.
Checking the.
The minutes you approved earlier in the meeting.
Yeah, we definitely.
What your action was at those previous months?
At the June meeting is when we extended it at June, so let's just double check.
Yeah.
It's postponed at the June 16th meeting.
Yeah, and I guess my question.
Until September 15th.
My question was more about action tonight, so it sounds like we didn't need to take, make a motion to table tonight.
I would just note it was discussed, no action taken. I think that's sufficient for me.
Thank you, Chad. Now, our second round of public comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
I live at 314 North Stranton Street in Gettysburg. And during the year that the Planning Commission was revising the rezoning document, I provided public comments that usually included a map or two. During my five minutes, the image was shown on the screen so I could talk about it. As only one of two Gettysburg Borough residents with a planning degree that I know of, I felt the responsibility to take part in this process. I had also attended your regular meetings for a couple of decades, and by the way, last time was the first time there was a rant like that, so. In February, Charles Strauss advised me via email that there had been some discussion between administrative, some council and solicitors behind the scenes, and people would not be allowed to do a presentation during public comment. But if I had images for my public comment, John Whitmore could show them on the screen. That worked for me. I think there's some confusion about what constitutes a presentation. Maybe you want to put that in your, but to me, that's in a different part of the meeting and can last longer. At the last meeting where I did a five-minute public comment, Nick Meredman chaired until Charles Strauss arrived. John Whitmore refused to show the image I had provided in my comments, I'm sure directed by his boss, Charles Gabel. Nick said I could comment during your discussion of the topic later in the meeting. Charles Strauss arrived, and when I tried to talk during that topic, I was told that I would have to wait until the public comment period at the end of the meeting. This starts to get into individual, individual speech rights issues. During the rezoning, you allowed the public to speak during the topics of concern to them throughout the meeting. That was welcome to the public and helpful to you and the process. Now you will revert to the agenda format you have traditionally used with public comment at the beginning and end of the meetings. You have never limited the ability to put an image on the screen. Maps and drawings can be especially informative on planning, planning topics. Apparently, there are people who have no authority over the Planning Commission who would like to influence how public comment is handled at your meetings. Do they think the amount of public input at your meetings unnecessarily delayed the rezoning document after they spent a year with a taxpayer-funded consultant behind closed The attached, the attached structure of Borough Government chart from PA Department of Community and Economic Development shows the council can only appoint Planning Commission members, and the manager has no connection at all to the Planning Commission or other authorities, boards and commissions. Yet some of them think you need their interference on running your meetings. Do they plan on approaching all the ABCs to change their practices? Do you suppose it has something to do with controlling the ongoing review of the Gettysburg Station project? Council policy for running their meetings is included in your packet. Is it supposed to be an example for you to follow? Council is a legislative body of elected officials, not a commission. Chairman Moon has not followed this section about public comment anyway. In December 2025, he announced at the beginning of the meeting that comment would be limited to four minutes, which is allowed under the Sunshine Act. He then said that after 30 minutes, the regular agenda would commence. He extended that by 12 minutes at the request of Patty Lawson, saying that's three more people, without asking how many people would still like to comment. That was not following the borough policy or the Sunshine Act. There are options on how to handle that, but an item should not be voted on until all public comment on that topic has been heard, as it says at the top of that page. And I also recently went to some training for GMA where this topic was discussed, and there are alternatives. You can go till 10:30, you can reschedule, whatever. But the Planning Commission agenda has worked fine in the past, and I think you may have had some good ideas, especially the behavior stuff. But if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Thanks.
Thank you, Sue.
And frankly, I liked your description of the Planning Commission approach to things being a little more relaxed, I guess.
Yeah. And I can assure, because the cameras are here, that our intent here with this, and this is public comment, is for John to draft something that maximizes input but still allows us to run an efficient meeting fairly. Is there additional public comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Marty moved and John seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this meeting is adjourned at 7:54 PM. Thank you, everyone.